Because you have to.
By the goodness of God.
Yeah. Uh, I'm sure that was something that basically whoever has the time and foundation files, I filed it before I was sure already. I filed today because when I drove through my driveway or some, it already files or some other guy.
Yeah.
Wow, I didn't recognize him.
Now, the seasonals, they've been too?
I've heard from secretary, it's, um, and I can't remember her last name. It was down the road. She says something about the seasonals, uh, that probably was, they're on the table somewhere.
I mean, the way we keep on our small association is about, I think it's about seven of us. Predicated on how far you live in.
Yes.
Um, and whether your, your seasonals pay a flat seventy-five. Um, and then the furthest.
So, the groups?
Yeah.
She's going to be here right away.
They said on the email.
Yeah, people be, yeah. Uh, the furthest one in pays two hundred. There's, uh, three of them that pay that. Uh, then midpoint, there's about two of us that pay a hundred and fifty. And we got two seasonals. And then with the beginning of the road, we got a guy that pays a hundred. And, but that covers mostly snowplow. And I keep the books and I pay eighty percent of that goes to snowplowing.
Oh, really?
Yeah, and we take care of our own road maintenance. We bring in gravel. Uh, one of the guys does the snowplowing, he's got a, a good-sized Massey Ferguson tractor with a, oh, what do you call the, uh, box scraper on the back?
Yeah.
And that works pretty good on the road. So, we don't have to.
Kind of just reverse, you know? The money goes to.
Grading, well, that's a long road.
Gravel and all that. Yeah, and whoever has the time, I, I live about a half mile off one eighty. I'll, oftentimes I'll just plow down, you know, from my driveway to the, to the.
One eighty.
One eighty. A lot of times though, I feel really ambitious and all that. I'll go back, you know, towards Smith Lane splits off. I don't like to go further than that because Hoppus Pond Road there gets very.
Oh, yeah.
You know, and it's, it's, yeah, I just, you know, I just, you know, don't mess with it. You sit lane by the miles, so. But, uh, it's usually, you know, I guess like sunken in that smell four inches or so. I was out plowing, you know, and it's a joke, you know, plowing, you know, just trying to put super ball.
Maybe not.
Yeah, so, but also they have roads with some kind of a plow or tractor or something.
Wow, that's another. You got there.
Does somebody have the, um, um, agenda?
Yeah.
You mean for the night? No, I mean the regular meeting. Regular meeting agenda?
Oh.
I didn't print it.
There wasn't anything on except this and then the workshop.
Yeah, I mean.
This is regular scheduled meeting. Yeah, I think you might, I don't know even know if you're probably doing it on your email.
I know, but he sent my.
I, I, I. I live on the phone, right?
Well, we're waiting for Bruce. Did you all get my email that I checked?
Oh, wait a minute. Bruce tried to call me and I didn't have my phone turned on.
Stuck in his driveway.
Probably. Should we show? I said see you at six. Well, he said my message was cryptic. Did you think my message was cryptic?
Oh, why do you think you changed it?
He goes, your message was cryptic.
Well, see, we can make it at six.
Yeah, that was it.
See, I can make it, you can make it, we'll see. All right. If you didn't, I'd have been able to set up.
Seems like we're in trouble. Like one eighty and all that. Didn't, I think he's going slower, but.
Yeah. I think there's heavy snow.
Hey, you're the only one that couldn't decipher the cryptology. Okay. Okay, see you in a while. Take your time. Okay, bye. Okay, drive.
So, anyway, I checked all the most here. MRSA references and, and they were all okay except for that junkyard one that, that had changed.
Wonder if you can find this here. No, we are. We hit you down there now. Over there. Because that's what I was supposed to do. Under Google Sites for like the longest time, you wouldn't find us, but I didn't, I, I, Google said if you, I forget, I had to go through some routine or whatever to get myself loaded into Google so if you Googled us, you could find us. Actually, Bruce said that his wife reread the email. He didn't read it very well, so he just told me.
I see you didn't think of it.
Jerry come down or no?
I don't know.
Might not be that Chicago.
He's probably saying.
Richmond City really.
So, you have to keep the rich one in. I got a breakdown, he's, I got a.
He's laying. Well, for me, I did not realize till the day. I never realized it was a man was burped. Here, anyway, it's kind of like a burber.
Jingle and church named after. Josh was.
It's kind of like fifth day or days.
That guy's got it together.
That's the same gender line.
The guy that got this guy in the corner, the, the corner of, uh, State and, uh, the North Main.
That's right. So, Joshua, he came down there and whooped your southern butt.
Actually, I, same with, I, I'm, my family history is all, it is a vague place. You know, maybe that's a good thing, but I, I know I had a, my mother's, my father's, uh, birth captain in Illinois.
Well, technically, I'm a southerner. I was born in South in Amazin Dixon Line and my whole family, for the most part, my mom's side is from South in Amazin Dixon Line. My, like, two greats grandfather was actually a courier for Lee.
Oh, really?
So.
The Black Civil War, it's, uh, I mean, living in Virginia, you can't get better than.
Right. Well, except for he lives in Frederick Marlin, of course.
Oh, yeah.
But there's no state rivalry there, right?
I, I lived and worked in Atlanta for periods. They love my accent down there.
I bet.
They knew the Civil War backwards, forward, upside down, inside out.
I lived in that museum up in Buckhead.
Yeah.
That is something.
They have a cycle round or two at Grand, I, I never went to that, but I, I knew there was one there.
So, all right, well, I don't think Jerry's gonna be here tonight, so we'll just press. Do you have a, can you take some notes tonight, Bill? Because I'll, um, all we have to do is just note who's here.
I guess Jerry was fixing trucks.
Yeah.
I would guess too. Just email these to Debbie.
Yeah.
You know what? We don't have, just the town office, she didn't print out the minutes, bring over. So, we're gonna have to write down, we'll take care of that in a minute.
We got a bit.
Yeah.
All right, so first thing we have to do is vote Dave in, because Jerry's not here. So, somebody make a motion.
I make a motion, I make Dave, a member tonight.
Okay, somebody second. All right, on favor. Okay, Dave's in tonight. We don't normally have to do that on a workshop. Today's a regular meeting, so. Tonight, uh, Paula was originally on the agenda. Is Paula here? Is Paula not gonna be here tonight?
No, she didn't want to venture out.
Okay. Um, so, uh, I guess we'll hear from Paula a different time. Because she was actually only intended to talk about the ballot. That was the first thing she was on the agenda for, for the actual official town meeting part. Um, and then the other thing is we have, we have minutes review, but we don't have the meeting minutes from Debbie because the town hall closed early. So, we have to review the January meeting minutes and approve them in.
On my morning, I tell.
Yeah.
I'm like, morning, I tell.
Till the March meeting. On favor. So, we tabled the January meeting minutes till March. We didn't have any projects anyway, so all we did is come into the workshop. All we did is just roll into the workshop anyway, so.
Okay.
So, does anybody else have any new business? Okay, do we have any public comments before we roll into the workshop? Okay, then, um, going to, uh, I'll hear a motion to adjourn the regular meeting and then roll into a workshop.
I make, oh, it came in at what, six twelve?
Yeah, it's probably like the fastest meeting in history.
I make a motion that we adjourn and, uh, go into the regular workshop.
Okay. All right, well, there. Now, we're in workshop. So, tonight we're gonna talk about articles four and five. Um, or we can also go over anything, um, for past comments too, because we actually did, we should maybe, just for the record here, review the website, see where we are so far. So, public comments, nobody's used these yet. Actually, they did check them tonight. Uh, excuse me, just discuss it.
I don't know if I can do much better.
So, there was, uh, when there were some discussion last, uh, last week about noise. Well, yeah, hang on, emissions. Not on this site.
Okay.
Not because of, well, this is, everything is on the site so far.
Okay.
So, nobody has made any comments on this public site yet.
Now, that test is my comment.
Right, right. These others are all just test comments, but there's no official comments on this website. This is just stuff that we posted. So, then the only other thing that we have, the public comments, is, uh, what I did was Paula had made comments a- about each of the, uh, articles. You know, we had previous discussion. So, what I did was, and looks better on a bigger screen, but anyway, uh, I, I went through and put her comments, um, by article on there. So, at some point, whether we do it tonight or different night, we need to probably address the public comments that were made. Then I also, uh, posted, um, the comments that Paula submitted, um, via email the next day. She sent me an email, basically the same thing she's talking about the night before, and she reorganized, uh, some of these comments. But anyway, so I posted those. So, my, my goal is for when people provide digital comments like this, that I can post them up something like this. Because, okay with that?
Yeah.
So. Anybody wanna address the public comments these tonight, or you wanna do them different night, or?
Well, I'm gonna see how we end up on four and five. If we get some time and we feel like we're.
I do have comments and response.
Okay. So, let's go to four and five first, then. Open this. Google logs, I guess. Okay, edit it in Google logs. Over there. So, where are we with, do you have any comments about this section? I mean, this section was pretty straightforward, I don't think.
Well, right away in A, loud residence reduces, not in four, one, two, and three, but down here, we're gonna have to change this, these dwellings to residence.
Right.
I mean, I, at least I didn't see anything in one, two, and three. You know what? What do we establish now, now, so we're gonna, how are we, what are you gonna do that for? I think we came up, we did it in definitions. Is that eighteen?
Eighteen, eighteen.
Oh, that's. Usually use like regular Microsoft Word, all my programs are gonna have a tool in it to insert a comment. So, basically, this is gonna be in table during four point three. Actually, the whole thing, review, chapter, article four. Change dwelling to residence. All right, so that's across the whole article. Okay, what else?
That's, we were gonna go like residence plan, we just reversed those.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, actually, we can go back and take a look at eighteen and see if you had what it was eighteen afterwards, though.
Yeah. I, I think it was very general, what it allows and, uh. I didn't see any issues there. I reread this.
Yeah, I think it's good to have chapter four because it, article four, and we talked a little bit last week about what will be good and what's not good to have in the ordinance versus other sections. I think that art, that article four is probably good to have because it does give somebody a general overview, overview of what they can do.
Yeah.
That's it, that's, it is very general. But that, the GMA is great. I've got lines in there, you know, but. Did we make some change? Did you make some changes in the?
I'm a sucker of lines.
Did, did one of the lines, you know, something?
It added.
Make, make some kind of comment. I did. I think what it says, I don't know, I lost, been on the line again.
The only other thing we could do in this GMA section is we could reference them to that table that's in, uh, in article six. So, where a big table is.
Well, already references article three, five, nine.
I think it was in nine.
Right. They were written, but maybe you tell them in some other section anyway.
What's on the line in this one? Been added, what was in the original? I thought it's in text, I guess.
It is pretty much just a verbose description of the rest of the ordinance.
Obviously, one thing that's gonna have to happen in here, this is gonna be one where we have to go back and check all these when everything is all done, all these like little fun things and track back to. So, I didn't see anything related to that here. So, we're okay with article four?
Mm-hmm.
And article five. I need a few more comments on five. So, that's the other reason I didn't really feel too bad about having this tonight because it's just not very.
So, we haven't changed any article names or anything, so these cross references, we go back and look at.
Yeah.
They're, they're all correct as far as going out to ten.
Right, right. At the article level, they're fine. It's just that anything below the article level is an issue.
Like section one E.
That would be.
We have to correct.
It's like probably at, at least one point five or something.
Yeah.
I'm sure Rick ever made any comments about, I mean, this, this would be, I'd be interested here for him to present a problem with five. But that's mostly his.
His stuff.
Yeah.
He hasn't made any comments to me.
So, maybe.
Maybe we should just directly ask him to make a summary statement.
Yeah, I would ask him if there's anything that he.
Shouldn't he?
Ask him to review article five. And if he needs change, uh, if he likes it.
Or if anything has been a problem.
Yeah.
Yeah, because we got references again, like on five four, he doesn't know about, we had dwelling here.
Chapter five, same in chapter five, review article five. And change dwelling to residence. Today's a fifth.
Correct. Five, five, four, we, we didn't see there's underlining.
Even street three, you wanna go down there? Go down with five, three, three.
Yeah, I'm not sure. Doesn't look like it's a change.
Oh, wait, you know, you're looking at, hang on a second. Don't be easy with your head. Very well looked at.
Yeah. Behind the line here. And I think that was already there, like available.
Right, that is. Probably just got reformatted. Let's see if I can trace this back up. Yeah, I think it said deleted three.
That was added to. That was added to the finish, it was out.
Okay. So, what did it say, permitting exemptions? That must've come in from the showing, because I definitely didn't think that about myself.
Remember, we've got a lot of these.
I know, but it didn't have a, a mark in this book. Let me look in another book. The old old book. Someone must've sent that to me. It's on my, this isn't like the computer I regularly use. This must've been from, this last like definitely regulatory language, something like Rick or somebody must've sent me.
I think we, this is what we went over last fall.
I think it is. Now, I read this, I think this is something that Rick did because it has to do with.
It's to do with plumbing.
Plumbing stuff.
Yeah. He did, he did give us some stuff.
Yeah, this would be, definitely be something from Rick.
Maybe he did, yeah.
Because like I said, I wouldn't, I wouldn't have known the right.
This was the original one.
Right.
Expansion, or that's just one line.
This was probably the plumbing permit, but Rick probably sent this to me.
Yeah.
Because like you said, some of the stuff we did over last fall, and we're re-going over some stuff. So, he did come.
Yeah, and the same thing on five, five, four, it's all plumbing kind of stuff. Five, five, four.
Right, I see it, see it's right there now. So, I definitely did not treat that like much, that must've been Rick.
That, up on under five, four, it's, uh, I think, did you?
You, uh.
Kind of tracked on putting the numbers in.
Yeah, you did. And, and it's on, on page five, two.
Um, you go right, 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 you're down, five, five, four, five, and then, when you're down, stay up there. Five, four, five, go to the next one.
Five, five, five.
And you got five, five.
Should've stayed, should've stayed five, four.
Oh, yeah, right.
Those last three all should be four in both.
So, five point, five point six through five point, five point eight should be point four.
Yeah.
Five point four point six through five point four point eight. Okay. Good catch.
If it's more, that's some more of the blue, that blue up there is on the line. That might be some more.
Yeah, this is where it's, that's what Dave was pointing out.
Yeah.
The additional changes in here are under, under scheduled fees. I guess word for a color has been added.
Yeah, I think we changed that one.
We have to come for a color. Seems to be, uh.
We're on what section number?
Uh, five, three.
And X to the three.
Oh.
We have no notes on that, same.
Right, well, no, those are, uh, the reason it's online is because it's added, okay? That was because. Right, well, no, those are, the reason it's online is because it's added, okay, that was because, um, if the. Board, if the planning board approves somebody and they're asking for a, uh, an appeal, this makes the appellant, puts the, like, the appellant in the same position as the applicant for having to do the fees, so obviously, the planning board said yes, and the appellant said no, and took it to appeals. And the appellant's gonna get assessed the fees that you have to hire, bring a consultant in to do it, but if the. Planning board says yes, or, or no, and the applicant takes the project to the appeals board, or whatever, then the applicant is still gonna be paying the fee. So, because the applicant will become the appellant.
Whoever appeals it.
Right.
That's right.
Whoever appeals, so this also would apply, I believe, to the CEO too, because if you appealed your stormwater permit, or whatever, or not your stormwater permit, your shoreline zoning permit. You'd have to be responsible for the saying that if they have to hire, like, another site evaluator, or an engineer, or somebody to come in, that you're gonna be paying for the expert to come in and talk about it. Those are step views very much anyway. And then Rick came up with that too, actually.
Other than paragraph, renumbering, that's, looks like that's all the edits that were previously, were done.
Well, I'm trying, trying to be very careful about making sure that that stuff is staying like this, so that it's clear, like, what has changed and what's not changed.
I know they don't make notes, but now that five, nine, ten, two, there's got a lot of open spaces that were, you know, just a formatting correction.
Okay.
Nothing here.
Five, nine, ten.
Five, nine, ten, two.
Yeah. L for formatting. Far as some of these formatting things, are you guys okay with this numbering system, or are you guys? I mean, one other thing, the only other thing I noticed in looking at other ordinances, which is just a little bit, I mean, I would not like it, but I would do it if I absolutely had to. A lot of other towns use this like one hundred, one hundred point one, and then the next chapter's like two hundred, two hundred point one, and they have like two oh one, two oh six.
Like electric code.
Like that kind of a code as opposed to this numbering system. I mean, if you're gonna, if you had any issues with the numbering system, like. Now would be time to say it, don't wait till April, because it will be like pipe paint, the further we go, the harder it will become.
Well, is it, is, not that it would be consistent with the way, uh, say, the. State of Maine numbers there, regulatory kind of thing, is this consistent with it, or?
No, what happens, the State of Maine actually does it somewhat similar in its arcane way that the, these older ones were done, the one before, which we had a problem with, where you get into, you know, just like the federal regs, you know, they have like big numbers and then little letters with parentheses, and then like little i's and all that, it's kinda like that.
But the town itself has full discretion on how they number the characters.
Right, there's no rule about it. Right.
In five, nine, ten, two, where you just were, there's a reference to the citizens concern form, which has gone away.
So, okay, five, nine, three?
Five, nine, ten, two.
Yeah, I noticed that, too. So that is officially gone away, or are we still using it?
No, we're not using it, the towns aren't using it.
Okay. It's referencing ongoing complaints to the coding enforcement officer relative to the operational permit.
Okay, so hang on a second. See the whole thing through, because we just make, need to make sure that there's a mechanism for appeal.
Yeah.
Oh yeah, and white spaces too. Formatting. So citizen officers' concern informs anymore. How do we?
By contacting the town office or the coding enforcement officer.
Well, we should make, I agree with that, it shouldn't have to be in writing, it shouldn't be, I pick up the phone, you know, um, so and so is doing their job, or whatever. I mean, it should be something that he can work with.
Probably just in writing to the, maybe to the town a little bit, everybody can.
Right, so maybe these would be.
Say in writing?
Yeah, just say in writing.
Leave it, leave it to the discretion of the person.
Yeah, because if they change their policies over time and brings citizens' concern forms back, then it's in writing.
Right.
So if we just change citizen concern form, they're in writing, it'll be okay.
Missing a couple of time. The last paragraph has it too.
Yeah. All submittals shall become part of the operations record. Yeah, that works. And that does also eliminate the problem if, uh, the select board changes its procedures again.
Yeah. Okay.
You saw the second reference.
Yeah, no, I just, I'll just go through and look for citizens and figure it out.
I ask this question, this is a general question, is thirty days enough time to correct, correct the violation, especially in what I've done? Especially if it's a, a camp or something where the landlord is not resident.
Well, this is only for operational permits, actually, leave, not, that has nothing to do with camp owners. This would only.
Five, nine, five, nine, eleven.
I know, I'm trying to get to the head of it. Okay, sorry about that, that was. Okay, so it's in, should be like in five, nine, should be operational permits.
Yeah.
Right, so see, so this is only for operational permits, so it's only gonna cover like wind projects, adult entertainment, um, and any of those things that get covered in chapter, was it sixteen or fourteen? Fourteen, only something that's covered in chapter fourteen, and so if we decided to have, uh, some sort of article about, um, any of the, uh, you know, marijuana, medicinal marijuana clinics, methadone clinics, things like that, those will require. Junk, junk cars are in there too, in fourteen?
Are you not sure if we've got a, uh, operational permit required for those, or not, I don't remember. If not, then it'd be one thing considered.
Adult businesses.
Well, we could just add to the end of that sentence, uh, uh. Unless the planning board grants a extension.
Camp rounds extracted from the streets. Junk yards are, junk yards are part of it.
Yeah, I'm not sure if any planning board should have the ability to just open and extend it. Because these are mainly referring to certain types of businesses, and those businesses shouldn't have any trouble addressing the problems one way or another.
As long as they're working on it. That's why you do it, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm correct, I just threw it out there.
Yeah, no.
Well, no, I'm trying to think of a situation where you couldn't fix it, and like. Like, don't forget, now, okay, that's kind of mobile home parks, okay, so let's just say that you have a mobile home park in town, and they have a, like a common septic, or a common well, or whatever, okay, and it is the winter time, you know, especially the well park, or even a water system, I mean. You could run into some issues.
You could, but at the same time, if they can't dispose of it properly, it's like.
That's a big deal.
Time to shut down.
I know.
Yeah.
If you got the number there, at least you got.
In other words, they have to come up with a way of addressing it, so if you had that water problem, they don't necessarily have to fix the system, they have to come up with a method of delivering water.
True.
To, to address the violation, it doesn't have to be the final solution. Oh, we'll leave it in there, and then there's an issue where someone can't correct it, and then they come to the planning. Is there a mechanism that we could?
Telecommunications towers.
Well, it does say, we'll make written findings and may suspend or revoke the operation permit.
Alright.
So you've got a little bit of whittle there, say that you couldn't get the septic system finished, fixed until spring, okay, how are you dealing with it meanwhile? We can't just have it running on the ground.
Yeah.
So if they say, well, that's what we're gonna do, we can say, your time's up.
Okay.
If they say, we're dealing with it this way and it's acceptable, we can say, you've got until frost leaves.
Right. That's true, that's how you may, so.
I mean, in most cases, you're gonna wanna be fair.
Because we wanna change this at all?
No.
Okay. Well, that was it then. We, other recommendations on five?
I don't have any listed yet. That's a beautiful thing.
So.
Maybe we could open some of stat on.
We will, I was gonna look ahead for, make sure we did what we said we were gonna do, so we did that. So next week is gonna be Article six and Article seven, so especially Article six, I believe, is pretty involved. So that definitely.
That means we moved to a table now, right?
Right. To make sure we do.
Basically, we've been through six, right?
Yeah, we have been through it once.
That's a matter of just kinda reviewing it back and forth.
But still.
And I think when it comes to six, we're gonna be going back and forth a couple times as we, because we've made enough changes to that table, it will probably.
Have some other things to look at.
Yes.
And, and Article seven, our general performance standards, and don't forget, you know, we moved anything that's general out of fourteen back into seven, so.
Six.
Per six, I mean. No seven.
Six. You wrote seven down at one point, it's not seven. Watched, we seen the movie, seven.
No, no, I mean, I know what you're saying now, looking at some of this. Okay, because Article seven's performance and Article six is.